A motion to open the meeting at six oh three.
To start it, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
A second for Rob. Anybody say no? So we're all good? All right. There you go. You said something Kathy, you wanted to say something?
No, I just said I made a motion.
Okay, good. All right. Uh, so we'll start with the minutes. Thank you Laura for sending them out. Does anybody have any questions or comments or suggestions about the minutes?
Correction.
Corrections, it looks okay to me.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January meeting.
Kathy's moved. Second from Jan. Uh, any objections? Hey, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, good. All right. Directors report.
Okay.
Okay, right away. Yeah.
All right. Let me, I was gonna try to do the sharing screen this time.
Is Jan here?
Jan is here.
No, um.
Lindsay?
Lindsay.
I didn't see Lindsay on there. All right.
She's gonna try to make it.
Okay. So, and start with the normal stuff, the statistics, they're pretty on par with how they usually are, especially for February.
Can I just inter for one second? I don't know how you put Jay for approval or non-approval, but his microphone is not on according to the screen. So you couldn't really count it as approving or anything.
And personally, he wasn't at the meeting, so he couldn't approve it, the minutes anyway.
Yeah. He would officially abstain, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. Um, Jay abstained, so it wasn't.
Sorry Darcy, go ahead.
Oh, that's fine.
If Jay can hear us, put your, uh, unmute yourself. Where's your?
Well.
No, it's just this has to scroll down, he's. Um, there he is. Yeah, he's on there. Yeah. Okay. So, any questions about the circulation statistics?
Yes.
Wonderful numbers.
Great, great numbers.
Thank you.
If I go on our website.
Yes.
Come hella high water, I can't find Hoopla canopy except on the whole page. Where it just lists them.
Yeah.
But it doesn't tell me what they are. So if I'm a new person coming in, I don't have a clue what Hoopla is. Now, if I go to resources where I would expect it to be, there's nothing there.
So a separate page for digital resources, you're thinking.
With the explanation.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And the next newsletter, we might wanna highlight that. It's invisible.
Yeah. Should be easy to put together.
And there's about three or four other online possibilities.
Oh, Lindsay too.
You can come around. Okay, that was a good idea. Um, standout programming. We have a good combination of, um, children's and adult programming. You'll also see a next month's report that we just did a program yesterday and we had fifty-three people.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's great.
I heard great things. I heard great things. Um, so the numbers for the totals, I have presented them. I left off virtual because that is really just my overbooked book club, which has like five attendees every month. I feel like it was just like these are more relevant. Um, so any questions about the programming numbers?
Great.
I think so.
On the totals?
Yeah, or the standout programming, anything really.
Okay, uh, for the finance committee, I said I was gonna try to put together the totals for the seven-month period.
Hmm.
So we have attendance, and this is where I have the problem, over eight thousand attendance figures for that time period, which is good. But one of the reasons I didn't bring it up is if someone asked me, is that in person or is that online? I couldn't give a breakdown of that, so this is something we may wanna work on.
So that's, that's in the spreadsheet that I sent you. I have that breakdown.
But it's all across the lot. Yeah, I don't, I can't get a number to match to the, like the adult programs.
Okay.
Without pulling from here, pulling from here.
Yeah, I know, it's, it is kind of, it is tough, yeah. It's tough to figure it out.
If you can give me, like you gave me, you already gave them, given me the one for the seven months, if you can do it going forward, I'll try to.
Yeah.
Balance it back.
I'll see if there's another way to do it. What I record in that spreadsheet is really everything that the ERIS asks, so that's, that's what it is.
So all you have to do Bob, this is how I would do it, the old-fashioned way. Go to Januaries or wherever you start the first month. For directors' report and say, adult programming two hundred nine for next month. Add it all up and then.
That's what I did.
Oh, I thought you said.
No, but what's the makeup? What's behind those numbers?
He's not sure which is a virtual.
Which are live attendance, it's youth attendance.
Well, they have adult programming.
Yeah, which is live and which is virtual, he wants to know the difference.
Oh, well, the hybrid programming is.
That doesn't tell you the number, but.
What I'm gonna tell you is that if it's virtual, it's probably adult.
Yeah, I don't think that they've had any youth.
Right.
The, the book club. Is that?
No.
That's accounted in here?
No.
I mean, the teen book club.
That, no, that's, that actually, the YA book club is an adult book club.
Okay, so that's, so that's counted in.
That's in with adult programming.
Yeah. So that's, that's, if I have to explain that to the finance committee, they're gonna be even more confused than me.
All right, to be fair, I don't know if they.
Well, they'll have a great, but if you, if you bring it up, they're gonna ask a question. Example, adult programming, how is that different than, uh, uh, hybrid in-person? Is any of the adult program in the hybrid in-person numbers?
All of it.
Yes.
All of it, hybrid is all adult.
And I think basically, the questions that they would ask, it's basically, the, uh, going to the finance committee is the director's, uh, she gives the report. And then she would answer the questions concerning that.
Yeah. Hybrid program in-person twenty-seven, adult program two hundred seventy-four, so this is for January. So you're saying that the twenty-seven is in the two seventy-four?
It should be, yeah.
Okay, so, I can't do the adds because I've been counting twice.
Hmm. Deducting and don't.
Yeah, so I'll figure it out.
I see what you're saying.
Lindsay's here.
Yes, Lindsay is here.
Yeah.
Yay!
See each other, okay? And yes, in person too, I'm good.
Okay, so. Museum passes, we had good numbers.
Very good numbers.
We did have vacation, we had school vacation, and that always bumps it up, and that's great for February, because not a lot of movement for any of it really during the winter, so.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, any questions about that? Lawrence? Um, so, we didn't have anything for twenty-three thirty-three. Think that was when I was away and then I got sick and it was the last meeting. And then, um, twenty-three thirty-five's total was three thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And the total for February was three thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And I think again, most of that was Ingram. Okay. So, I gave an update on the Bob Guptill project. I've been in communication with Bill, he's indexing everything. He just has, um, a personal matter right now that he has to take care of for a little bit, um, like with a, for a couple of weeks. And then he should be back to indexing, but he's done about a quarter, I think. Um, and then he also got a box of discs that should have backups for a lot of what's in the binders, but again. I'll do a lot of double-checking and make sure of that.
Excellent.
Yeah. Yes, so progress has been made, there's, there's.
Excellent.
The index from the notes he's been taking, I think is going to end up looking really good, so.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Yeah, log down.
Would, could I ask a question? Would it be possible, is there any chance that we'd have a volunteer already in place? Or someone that may be interested in volunteering to specifically be trained to work with Bill Newell on this project?
He's, he's been bringing in somebody to help him.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
It's just different from what Lauren was working on.
Lauren stuff is what we already had.
Yeah.
Bill?
No. No, we.
Before Bill.
Yeah, we already had.
Bill is, yeah.
Yes.
So where do we stand on that?
That has been, the, there's been progress with sorting them into the, um, the file folders in the back. And so they're, they're all separated by category, so this is Grohlend and specifically the school and specifically this, so, um. There has been project, progress on it, there's also, she's also doing a newspaper archival project for me, so she kind of splits the time a little bit, but. She's made significant progress, I think.
We get enough thing next week?
Yeah, I will ask her about that.
And this all ties in together with historical preservation, uh, with Robert Guptill and that project. But this is being, it's a little more detailed.
Yes.
Is the Global Historical Society aware of all of that?
Um, yes, and they, they received items as well, so, um, Bob Guptill willed certain things to us, some things to the Historical Society, some things to the church. And elsewhere.
Cool.
We all got specific items.
Darcy?
Yes.
Do, do we still have stuff in the basement or is it all upstairs?
Um, I think it's pretty much all up. I'll check on a slightly warmer day, but I think.
I think, I, you know what, I think that everything at one point was removed from the basement except for some big wall-hanging pieces.
Yeah.
Such as the big plaster piece and also the, uh, picture of the, um, was it Appomattox? I can't remember, but it, it is from the Civil War.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a piece that was too big to store upstairs at that, I think there's not much, no paperwork is left down there, it was all burnt up.
I, I believe it's not.
Yeah.
There's no paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all good questions, anything else? Any other questions about that? Okay. Um, just an update, we've been working together with the new COA director, he's great, we're going to. Be doing some intergenerational programming with him.
What's his name?
Uh, Sean Cass, with a W.
Sean what?
Oh, S-H-A-W-N. I, I have been saying that because we also have a Sean who has a different spelling.
That's his last name?
Cass, C-A-S-S.
He's already made a big difference in the newsletter that they send out, it's very readable and.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
I'm great with this project, because I was sitting in on that. Not necessarily sit on, in on that meeting, but.
Yes, so we are, we are working on it, but we don't have anything established yet, so I don't think I can say very much, but there is going to be collaborative programming and.
That's wonderful.
Bridges.
That's great.
Um, okay, so, then I wrote a simple Library of Things policy, I'm going to. Um, go over to that, 'cause for some reason Mary Lou did not get my email, I have no idea why. But I will flip over to that, so Mary Lou can read through it.
Why didn't you want that? Did you just?
It was with the director's report and everything, it's four files.
Oh, it's way in the bottom, I didn't.
Yeah. Sorry, it's okay, I don't think I said, I don't even know if I said anything in the email, I was just, just sending along, I was sending a lot of emails.
I kinda, I was looking for it, because you said it was a director's report.
Right, and I thought it was just, she made it.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So, this is really simple, it's really just to cover us in case anything happens. Um, it also refers to the hotspot borrowing agreement, so that, you know, there, anyone taking out anything that's not a hotspot. Hotspots get their own separate one, because they deal with the internet and networking and things like that. Um, this will just be distributed to everyone who checks out a thing. And, um, that way, they have this information, it's pretty much the same borrowing information as the hotspots. So they should be in good standing, they should be eighteen or over. Um, you know, if a kid wants to check something out, it should be their adult.
Do they need a library card?
Yes.
Then you should put that in.
Yeah.
Always check out our patron?
Well, yeah.
So isn't a patron meaning you have to have a library card?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and patrons must be in good standing, so they, being in good standing means have a library card. Yeah. Um, they, they're not renewed, because we're going to have some bigger ticket items, like right now Lauren's cataloging a Switch, so.
A what?
Uh, a Nintendo Switch, it's a.
Oh.
It's like a game-playing thing.
Okay.
Um, so, again, there aren't fines, but if they lose it, they're billed. And then.
Could I just make a suggestion, maybe, I think on the second paragraph, just to, can maybe checked out for up to two weeks?
Yeah. Up to two weeks.
You change that in system, because this is not automatically.
But to put in, they have to return to the Langley Adams Library, you don't want something returned to Dad and ever.
Yeah, it's like a.
Trucking it down.
Said it for two weeks, it's like the deadline is two weeks, so it can't be any time before that.
Yeah, because you can return books, you can return books anywhere, but you're not gonna be able to return those anywhere.
Right, exactly, so that's why I said.
Yeah.
Checked out at Langley Adams Library and returned to.
Yes, yeah.
Circumstance.
I get, yeah.
Yes.
I get the purpose for doing it, that's important.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
Will this include the historical data?
No, that's a completely separate thing.
And would that even leave the library, the historical data?
No.
I didn't think it would.
So we'll, we'll have a whole.
Yes, a whole different one, yes, yes.
I think there were a couple of requests for, um, tools, I guess, tools that aren't used terribly often, I know nothing about tools, but. If anybody wanted to donate something like that and going along, that might be a nice thing.
Yeah, that's why I just said, the thing at the bottom about discretion, you know, a tool, I would accept a tool that's in good condition.
Small blocks.
We have to have the storage space to.
I would love that.
Yeah.
Do you wanna build a space for us? You'd think, right?
A vault?
Yeah.
Well, if the shed ever gets, uh, partly emptied out, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have a couple of shelves in there, uh, dedicated to just that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's very wishful thinking, I think.
We'll see.
I would check out the liability that comes with that before I go.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be an intense one.
Yeah.
Uh, Darcy, could I just take a minute and let them know that this was helping the town too?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know.
For a second, I was like, what do you mean, oh, yes.
Yeah, so, um, Rebecca and I were working on the recycling dividends program. And, uh, the program is that you do certain things in town and you get a certain amount of points for each thing, and every point is worth roughly like four hundred and something dollars. You get that back from the state.
Wow.
And then you can do more projects. So, um, this is the second year we're working on it, and, um, we do get a point for the program. Just by the library, having thirty items in the Library of Things, which they have. And Darcy and Lauren, I guess, right, were working the most on this to get them all catalogued in time for the deadline, so.
Yeah.
We probably made the town another four hundred, four hundred and something dollars by doing this, so it had other benefits besides the benefits of being the Library of Things for the patrons. So I thought everybody'd like to know that.
So if one point is equal to four hundred dollars, is that what you said?
Roughly, roughly.
Yeah.
You know, it, it probably, year to year, it's gonna be a little bit of a different formula, but that's roughly what you get. You know, we get some points for having the compost yard open a certain amount, or, you know, points for things like that.
Excellent.
But the Library of Things, because you're basically, you know, encouraging people to borrow things rather than to buy more things and throw more things away. It, it, um, is an eligible thing for the dividends program, so that was exciting.
Yes, so that also has a page on our website, which is under construction, but it has, I have started to list the items on there.
Excellent.
The descriptions.
Yeah, Darcy.
Yeah.
Is, is there a way of, um, to, how do I, how, how can I put this? Is there a way to, um, notify, I mean, to notify people that it, that there may be interest in some things before they. You know, get rid of them, that there may be interest in, in, in some things for the Library of Things. I mean, they have to, you have to, you know, it's, you know, obviously you can't take everything, but.
I mean, I can put a little blurb in the newsletter, if that's.
I think you'd have to be specific.
Yeah.
Obviously, yeah, we have to be absolutely careful, because, you know, they'll.
Yeah.
People will want a tax, you know, for a tax write-off, but how do we know what, what we're taking is operative and complete?
Well, it has to be a.
I mean, you could put something in front of me that was tool-wise or something, I didn't have no idea what it did or why, but.
It has to be a process for it, is my point.
Right.
That's the point, a, a process for evaluating whether something would be appropriate for the libraries. But there may be people interested in, you know, wanting to, um, you know, not have something anymore, but it may be something that would be.
Right.
Good for the Library of Things, I mean, I don't know, I haven't thought that much about it, it just sort of popped into my head, but it might be a. That, you know, just a way of evaluating, I mean, people would have to accept no for an answer if it was something we.
Yeah. To be fair, we get those questions already.
Oh, you do, yes.
Yeah. Not specifically Library of Things questions, but I have this random thing, do you want it? And a lot of the time, it hasn't been something we can use in our collection.
Um, right.
And of course, space is always an issue too.
Yes.
Space is a huge issue.
Space is a huge issue.
That's the big issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially that library, which is small to begin with.
I mean, I can also make a note on the Library of Things page on our website that they have to make an appointment.
Yeah.
Um, instead of just.
Oh, not just drop things off outside the door, I mean, that's a disaster.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that can be a disaster.
Yeah.
I, I know, I change artwork in my house the seasons, I have fall pictures and drawings, and I have Christmas things. And maybe people would like to be able to borrow something like that, houses are breaking up, people don't need or want all that anymore. A small collection of Christmas art, a small collection of fall art, those are kind of easy to slide into a space. Somebody might want something like that to use.
Do you, could you publish a, a list of these types of things we, we have? I don't even know what you got.
Yeah, so we have that on our website, um, and I'm, I, it's under construction, so I haven't updated it with, or the ukulele, the switch and things like that. It's okay, it's, it's a new page, it's, it's a fairly new page.
This is a big project for the library to take on, and I'm glad we did. And I'm glad that it benefits, uh, like Jan said, the town as well.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we all, Darcy already had it in place, pretty much.
Yeah, it's just, we're putting a name to it now.
It was just kind of, the, the nice thing was, it connected it with, um, the town, with Town Hall, people weren't even aware of it.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And so there's more awareness now, and also kind of, um, encouraged Darcy to maybe get a few more things catalogued, just to make the. You know, there was a requirement of thirty things, and they had to be in three different categories. So, it, I think it really worked out well. I don't really know if it's something personally that we should like, just keep adding things to, because I think the space is really, really the problem. And, um, it, but it is nice to have certain things in there that people can try before they buy. For example, a ukulele, you take it out for a couple of weeks, you know, you might decide, you know, it's not the instrument for me, and I'm really glad I tried it before I bought one. That's kind of the whole point of it.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah, well, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Darcy.
So I just wanna publicly thank Darcy for working on that and her staff.
Well, thank you, Jan, I, I appreciate your part in this too, because you were working with Rebecca on the, the town side, and I think environmentally, it's gonna be really good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We need to do everything we can.
That's right.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, so, I can amend this, but maybe approving is amended, does that work?
Sure. Yeah. So, uh, this is, we need to approve this as a board. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or, uh, suggestions from this, besides what we've already said?
I've written down the suggestions.
Yeah, Darcy's got the.
The library card and checked out up to two weeks.
Yeah. Anybody?
I make a motion to appro, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead Kathy.
I make a motion to approve the policy that Darcy put together with the amendments.
Okay.
A second?
A second from Laurel, any further discussion? Okay, this will be, we'll have to do a voice vote on this one. Uh, Laurel?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Me, yeah. Unanimous, okay, good.
Thank you.
All right.
That's what I have.
All right. Does anybody have any, uh, questions for Darcy? We're good with this?
Yes. Yes, good numbers.
Yeah. Okay, um, treasures report, thank you for sending out the Bartholomew thing, Mary Lou.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Um, the, um, one thing I wanted to mention, that when I talked to, um, Brian Jamrose, um, they can only send that one copy. And they, um, so, that's the one that we, that we have to, I have to get from the, from the Town Hall to put in our file, because they get it. They, and, and, um, and, but he did say that he could, if you, if you wanted to, any of you that wanted to. Um, could have an, uh, just a read-only copy, electronic copy of this, but just a read-only one. If, if, I would have to provide him with your, all your emails to do that. So I don't know, I don't know if there's interest in doing that, if there is, you know, if anybody doesn't want to do it. You could, I could, you know, just do it for the people who wanted to, however, you know, it's, it's your pleasure.
I'm good with the way you send it out, it's fine with me, the way you deliver it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can, yeah, well, it's fine with me too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have any other thing to say about that? Yeah, I think with the procedure you've been following, it works out really well.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I just.
Fine.
That's settled on, okay.
Okay, good.
All right.
Anything else, Mary Lou?
No.
Okay, good. Um, so, I just wanted to quickly ask, uh, so, Lindsay, are you up for me actually, are you gonna go with that?
I haven't done the paperwork yet, I got the paperwork, I just have one.
Okay, do you need, do you need somebody?
Uh, it should be in the car, I'll grab it.
Bring it in both sides. Yeah, we'll sign for you.
I have one for you.
So, so Rob, and then Laurel, you're too, right?
I'm done, I'm.
Okay.
I forget about it.
What's the date?
Twenty-third?
I, I'm seeing March fifteenth, maybe twenty-third, I. I just, I knew if I didn't do it right away.
I just, I knew if I didn't do it right away.
Do you need the dates? I can, I have them, because they, we got something, I got something.
The census, yeah.
Sent, I, I have it right on my desk, wait a minute, I'll get it.
Um, that being said, just so you know, if you are still looking for signatures. They've changed things that you can actually do at any public building. So it used to be we'd have to go out.
Right.
Ten hundred feet from the building and sit there in the snow and sign, but you can do it and go to Town Hall. So that's, that's what a lot of people were doing on Monday night in Selectman Meet. They go sit there and as people come in, you don't have to vote for me, but would you sign? My petition, we will definitely all sign.
Oh, definitely. Tell us where you'll be and we'll.
Voters, I don't know if this, any.
Sean should be.
Sean, yes, Sean signed mine, yes.
Yes, five, five, um, five P M on March thirteenth is the last day.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew the five was it, that's, that's next Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five P M, so you won't get it.
Yeah.
But yeah, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
How many, do you have any?
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's me, I'll get the point.
The Laurel's on it.
I'll bring scouts tomorrow, get someone there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, uh.
For any meeting, any meeting at Town Hall, any, even just going into Town Hall, you can ask people uh, to sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're.
Church last time.
Yeah, it's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so uh, the other thing is the uh, uh, the subcommittee to look at the uh, director's evaluation. Lindsay's unable to do it, so uh, do I have anybody, a, a third person, because Nancy said she would do it. I'm gonna do, I think it'd be good if we had a third. Anybody else interested in working on, in that review committee, subcommittee?
I can help if you don't, if you need somebody.
Oh, good, oh, Jan said.
Jan, Jan, we'll, we'll go with Jan.
I think she's a good one, because she's a library director.
Because it was the director before, so she'd be, have good input. Thank you for offering, Kathy. If you still want, you can be part of it if you want.
No, thank you. Because nobody was speaking, I spoke, that was it.
Okay, so uh, Jan, I'll, I'll contact you and Nancy and we'll set up a time to meet. Either uh, virtually or in person, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to meet in person.
Okay, good, good.
If it works best.
Yeah, I, I prefer that, but I'm not, yeah, okay, so I'll let you know what, what we work out.
Okay.
Good, okay. Um, anything under other?
Yes.
Yes, Laurel?
A reminder to people, you, I hope you all see the email about the. Ethics board. Everyone has to do it, even if you've just done it. Because the state is changing, the ethics training, the way you go about doing it. And so you all, if you got that email, you have to do it by March thirty first. Um, and there's two parts to it, and you don't have to print out a form that says I've done it. It goes automatically into the state system, and then Beth knows who's done it. So that has to be done.
Yeah.
And then I have another thing, um, this is coming from my other job, at C O A. The C O A was um, approached by the town. The town is now going with a company similar to. I forget the name of it.
EcoSmith, yeah, I've talked to Sean about it.
Yes, so Rebecca says, well, what about the library?
She's included me, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It, because it would be a board vote if they wanted to do this.
Yeah.
So the, the um, EcoSmith box that we have that um, takes donations, it's down at Andrew's Insurance. It takes donations, the cloth, sneakers and pillows and things like that. Uh, I wanna say it, it creates six cents, a certain amount of pound, poundage. And Rebecca has found a different company that makes more money per poundage. So the town, and they put up one or two of them. I've seen one and I can't remember where I saw it. But it's a different company, it will say Town of Groveland, and then if it's for the library, it will say library. If it's for the council and agent, it'll say council and agent. If it will say it's just for the town, it will go to the town. They're gonna have them all over town. Problem with the library one is it's on private property right now, the one we have, the existing one. And I don't know if you have a contract with them or not.
I'm not totally sure, because it was set up by Amy.
Get on the bandwagon with it or not, but you know, they, Rebecca told me that they could find town property. To put the library one on, so like maybe down at the, the um, the ball field or something like that, you know, maybe have a little. Little library, um.
I think that would be perfect.
The lending library, something like that. I don't know, maybe they have another one there, but. I, it's a thought, it's, it's a way to get more money. I don't even know how much we make on it.
So it's, it's two cents more per pound.
Two cents, okay, per pound.
Yeah.
How much do you get? Is it quarterly?
Five cents and it's, it's quarterly and lately it's been like one hundred fifty dollars.
Right, so, that's a lot of pounds.
Yes.
And, but it's, that's a hard place to pull in and out of too, so I think it would be great if it was in a public property.
And, I mean, so I don't know how, how you go about changing it, but.
I mean, I can get in touch with them, because hopefully everyone's still there that was, or they know of it. Because it was a twenty fifteen establishment.
Right, and I know when you, Sean, the director over at C O A, you told me yesterday. You called the gentleman and he, he says, I feel terrible saying, well, do we have a contract with you or not? Because we can't find a contract, he says, well, gee, I don't know, and it was kind of like, sounded like they were always disbanding.
Yeah, I mean.
Question you've got to.
Well, the thing is, we've had no contact with them whatsoever, except for the quarterly checks. That's it, um, but, yeah, I'll call, I can call them, but I. Feel like it's going to be a similar situation. I'll try.
What, no, you said fine, you, you didn't mind that we were leaving.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I personally, I think more people know about the C O A one, because it's more visible.
Yeah.
Wanting to go into Andrew's Insurance, it's at Andrew's Insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a tough place. It's actually the printing place to put that there.
It is, it is a tough place to get in and out, I mean, you know, and I think if it were like down at the ball field or someplace where people, you know. Or whatever public. Right, well, there's one right there, the C O A, and did you want, that's.
How about the ball, while the ball field isn't in the winter time?
It'll benefit me if it's here, because I could just drop. I have a lot to get rid of.
So we would advertise.
You should block the walkway.
Oh, wow.
I, I, it was just a thought, it's a little bit more money. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot more per pound, but.
Oh, it does add up.
Hundred something dollars on, what's that, five cents a pound, that's, that's a lot of pounds.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's fine, I'm.
It was just a way, yeah, and I said, oh, that's belong to you guys.
Yeah, so. The board wants to vote for it, yeah.
I mean.
I wonder if the Bagnall would let us put it down on their property.
Up by the signs, they wouldn't even have to go all the way in.
No, no, just anywhere along the roadway, it's wide there, they've pushed, all the growth has been cut back. That might be a very good place.
I mean, I'm sure Rebecca has places that she knows.
Yeah, that are available.
Wide and talking about getting in on the town and being.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's true, very true.
Why don't we approach that and see what Rebecca feels about that? The ball, the pines would be nice, but it's closed, buried all winter.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, they're down, the dog park's not.
That's been a very busy place.
That's been very busy.
Yes.
Well, someplace like that, why don't you can ask Rebecca's opinion of it, uh, Darcy?
Yes. But yes, if the board wants to vote to pursue it, I will.
Is that something we need to vote on, or we just asking?
I mean, it's a money.
It's a money thing, I mean.
And possibly establishing a contractor breaking one, so possibly.
Although that might go to the town. I don't think it's, do you have a copy of a contract?
Not that I've seen, no, I've looked.
There was no contract at the time, that's when Amy was there, and that was, it was just to, um. It's, she talked to the person who runs Phoenix Printing at the time, and that's how that happened. I make a motion to have, uh, ask Darcy to approach Rebecca for, to place a box specifically for library. Um, in a. Button growing.
What, what is, what is the new company?
I'm not sure, I saw it on.
I don't remember.
Would you, Kathy, would you think that maybe the, the P T O at the Bagnall School would wanna do something like that themselves?
I don't know, I don't know if they've ever had one or done it.
Yeah.
But, if they haven't and we have the opportunity to approach it, uh, or the dog park or, or somewhere.
Darcy, how many did you say she's thinking of putting around town, did you say?
Oh, I don't know, um.
I didn't know if you, I, I missed something, so that's why I'm asking. Was she just, she's planning on still having the two, the one for the C O A and the one for the library?
And one for the town.
It's already, oh, there's already, I think she said there were two for the town.
Yeah, there are ones specifically for the town too.
Okay.
And that's what my question was like, so if we get one, we're telling people, oh, you know, put it down at such and such a place. Is the money gonna come to, you know, like, and she says, no, it, each box. That's designated for library, C O A, whatever it is. Will be, you know, this box took six hundred pounds. I don't, I don't, I'm just giving a number. And then the, as the money comes in, we would get, cut it, they would cut it. I don't know if they cut the check or the town, that's the check.
Okay, and then it goes into our donations account, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
My concern was also giving up the one that we know gets right to our organization and then just goes to town account.
Yes.
Well, it's a funny, you know, way to get donations.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, so Kathy's made a motion to move forward, and it's been seconded by Laurel. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a voice vote again, all those, if they were pursuing this change in the don, that donation system, that sounded okay? Alright, um, Laurel?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Jan?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Emmy, yes, okay, unanimous, alright. Anything else under other?
I have, yeah, one question. In the fullness of time, the budget gets approved and we're at year end. Have we resolved the difference between the adult and the youth as far as salary goes, the difference?
Yes, um, yes, yeah, as long as that gets approved, yes.
Um. It just occurred to me, the, our, the changing, uh, we made changes in our bylaws. So that's, that's submitted sometime, at some place.
So it basically. No one seems to know. It appears that the library stands alone. We don't have to have it approved. At Town Meeting. We have our own bylaws. We can do whatever we want to.
Oh.
As long as it's within the parameters of, you know, the mass um, board.
Right.
And, you know, we're not going against town laws.
And you're not.
And we're not.
How do you find out we're not?
Rebecca.
Yeah, she's, she's mentioned it, yeah, she's talked about it.
She was putting in a call to the um.
Town Council.
Town Council, but I had not heard otherwise, and when I spoke to her last, she said, just change it whichever way you want it. So we can either say, and basically we do the hiring, it's just a courtesy when we bring a director forward.
Right, right.
So they're not hiring, we are.
Right, yeah, but that's.
They kind of have to approve the staff.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Just the whole bylaw.
The rest of the bylaws, the, the change, I think we talked last time about it and said everything was like, okay.
Yes.
Except for that one piece that, um, that the state's.
Yeah.
Board said, well, in one place you're saying the selectmen approve, and in the other case you're saying you approve.
Right.
Yeah.
So. It's how you wanted.
Yeah, the trustee's a point.
So my point is, we don't have to hurry and get it done for Town Meeting, is that right? Okay, alright.
But it's, it's pretty much done, we can do it, we can vote tonight on it, because it's just cleaning up.
Have you heard from the state yet?
From the state, yes.
Rob Bavini, that was.
Yeah. Was the one that said.
Okay.
This is the discrepancy I see.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And so he said, so I go, I don't know, I mean, I'm looking all, I looked to the town bylaws, I looked to our bylaws, well, we had our bylaws. I looked at library, the mass board of library commission, nowhere could I find anything about. What is the, the responsibility of the trustees, do we have the power, or do we, are the selectmen? Over us, as, as far as, like, we, we make a recommendation.
So how can we vote on the bylaws if you don't know the answer to that question?
Well, the, the answer was from Rebecca.
Yeah, so it's because the town doesn't have anything in their bylaws that gives them. More power than the trustees.
Okay.
Right.
So all we need to do is vote on the amended bylaws.
We have to.
Yeah.
It's up to you, do we wanna be, so let me get the bylaws up, hold on.
Well, but, but if we remember, what drove this whole process was whether. Uh, the chairperson could serve one term, two terms, three terms, four terms. That never got answered when we sent in our recommendation.
It doesn't matter. Yeah, we're good with that, um, the changes, um, we, we said yes to that, the only thing, and then we, we voted yes for these bylaws. All the changes that you and Kathy and I worked on that committee brought it forward, we voted for it all. And then it was suggested that we send it into N B L C, do, you know, are we in keeping with N B L C laws? I sent our bylaws in, it took a while for him to answer, I reminded him again, oh, I lost your email, yeah, thank you, okay. And that's what he brought up, and let me see if I can find it. He said, he's going to Bavini. Um, by law stuff. Hey. No, put that in, I guess, that's with you. I'm sorry, um. The name is. Into my regular archive, here we go, archive, search for the name, I remember his name.
Know what, what we could do, maybe be easier if, if we, since it's not on our agenda for tonight. Maybe if, um.
Well, it was to, to be researched, to be brought, so that could be into other.
But, but if we, if we could all just see the final copy before we voted, that would, that would help me.
Okay, why don't you do that?
Yeah.
Find it, you, you've got all email addresses, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to just do that?
Okay, I just have to.
And then we, and then we can vote at our next meeting.
I, I would just feel better because now I can't remember what change was what.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good point, Jan.
Laurel, when you send that out, you might, might wanna put a note in there, this is what has been approved by. The town, Rebecca, and whatever, and it'll be the final.
Oh, send it, what do you mean, I'm sending it to you.
No, no, when you send that to everyone, the lead should be, here is a copy of our.
Approved.
Uh, which has been approved by da, 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 which is what we're saying.
Well, they didn't approve it, because what they're saying is they don't have to approve it.
They don't have to approve.
Well, let's say that in the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, so it's in writing?
So it's in writing, yeah. Okay, but she never really read all the bylaws, I just, I brought it to her.
Yeah, well, there would be a section, like a trustees or a library section. And the town bylaws.
No.
Right?
Yeah, not in the town bylaws.
That's what I mean, there would be. Yes.
There's really no need for Rebecca to see our bylaws.
No, no, but I was just making sure that they didn't have.
Right.
Had already overrun us.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Been cleared, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, so Laurel, so we'll vote on it next, next time.
She said we don't have to go to town meeting, even though we did have to go to town meeting to.
Yeah, there there was a. There was an impression of that, but.
We just put it in writing and.
They had to go to um, town meeting and get that voted. All their bylaws voted in, but.
You don't have to go through that.
Well, exactly. That's why that was.
We probably we probably didn't have to just hold to. There was there's a precedent for it, but it doesn't mean we can establish a new one.
Stories become stories become law and and.
Five years from now, but someone's gonna say, gee, this doesn't agree with what states. We'll say Laurel will pull out her minutes.
I mean, we used to be, we were told for quite a while that we were not allowed to have a contract with the director. And we were told that over and over and it's mass general law. So these these stories get told enough times so people believe them.
Email Darcy like, is this the hell is that? What's Laurel doing about this? Yeah, I think that was. Well, how come you're doing like I was doing it behind your back or something?
No, I I think she just likes to check to make sure because, you know, so. Again, there's that full communication thing that she's established, which I think is awesome.
I told you that. The first I saw that, I'm like, you didn't believe.
That's that's the that's the course we'll take. We'll we'll roll it on next month. Anything else under other? Now, I don't, doesn't look like from our screen that we've got any audience, but if we do, is there are there any comments in the audience?
Shall I bring up the list of participants just in case?
Just in case.
I don't think.
So I think that's that should cover ourselves. Anybody else they want to bring up? Next meeting, April twelfth, I think. April twelfth? April twelfth.
And you can all wish me a happy birthday. My birthday's on Easter this year.
That's exciting.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mary Lou, you want to second that? Bob moved?
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed?
Your your timing, Jay.
Yeah, do two two things at once.
Either that, either we're close to unanimous or we're not, but we got it done. We got to vote. All right, so thank you all very much. We'll see you in a month. I'd like with Chan and Nancy about.